We don't have a economy. We changed the plan when we originally came in. Then there was a time that we sat down and had negotiations with the city of Berea, which the plan then changed. When we came back and decided, after we went through the Berea station to talk with the township, there were multiple plans that we put in front of the group to say, what were we going to do to go further? And in the end of December, sometime in December of last year, we sat down as a group with a few members of the township to talk about what this plan could look like. So there were several plans sitting there. They were from 162 units to, there were plans up to 293. The original plan was done by Ferris Clean and the original developers of Sandstone. And the discussion we had at the end of December, the discussion was to push the density low. So we used the lowest density plan we had. We had that meeting, which had 162 units. And during that time in the meeting, we talked about taking that number low. So you're asking which plan? We're asking for a zoning change. Okay, part of that zoning change is going to say, you have to follow these rules and regulations. And then it has to go back to the board.
Sir, I'm an attorney. I understand.
I'm sorry?
I understand. I have no questions.
All right. Good, and then I'll circle back to you and then that'll be it. Go on.
Okay. I used to have hordes, but I don't anymore. But Old City Township is mainly horse country. And even if people that live there don't have horses, they love horses, they love animals, they love their deer, their turkeys, anything that's wild is welcome. You get 200 some houses coming out of that area and the traffic coming up and down. That's already coming up and down. I live on memory lane. Half the time I can't pull in or pull out because the traffic is coming speeding up the hill and speeding down the hill. My neighbor has horses that can't even cross the street with, with... What are you going to do about the traffic and the lights and all of that to ensure the safety of the horses and the riders? With all that extra traffic if you have 200 some homes?
That would be addressed during the call on the stage.
Is there anybody else who hasn't asked a question who would like to?
So let me say, this is a question for the township. So I didn't realize that the last time we did this, they just withdrew their requests.
Correct.
So if they go forward with the request, you got, you, the trustees vote, vote on it? Is that how it works? If you turn it down, can they reapply? That's my question.
Yes.
Mr. Maney?
No, they certainly could. They have other remedies they could pursue as well, which would be a court review.
Thanks.
All right, last one, and then we're going to move to public comment.
The question was asked, what is the benefit to the community? And you guys dodged that. I think that we, as a community, have the right to know the difference in the land value when there are 36 homes on it versus when there are 162 homes or 298 homes. Because I can just do the math in my head and pretty much know the answer, but I think that you guys need to be transparent about that. So the weapon is, do you know those values?
The values of the homes?
Yeah, the value of the land to Mr. Hollow when he sells it and it's built for 36 homes versus when it's sold and developed for 162 homes versus when it's sold and developed with 298 homes.
Is the question what the land is under contract for?
We're not being allowed to disclose that. We have confidentiality for decisions regarding what we have to disclose and information.
How many people think it's probably worth more, like the more homes they get? And considering that you guys have lived here long enough, we all know that Hollow also...
Ma'am, we're going to proceed to public comment. Sir, do you have a question or a comment?
Question.
The question is fine.
If, have you retained an engineering firm, civil engineers to work on plans, whether they're preliminary or... If they want to log, do you...
Yes. So, sorry. But we have had NAP associates who did the original layout of Sandstone and had all of the surrounding information with regards to grades, falls, stormwater, sanitary water. They've been retaining their current engineer to do site layout. They also have the decision of those site layouts, front rains, you know, counts of units, footage provided of lots. So yes, we have. Going further, you know, then there's a different engineer that takes it from that part, possibly it could be the same. And then does everything you see on the ground, you know, as far as the information on the storm and the sanitary, they have something else determined, they know where the connections are at. But as far as depths and sanitary depths of water, you know, layout like that, that comes out.
Was NEF responsible for undersizing?
Ma'am, if you're not recognized by the chair, you cannot speak. We need to have order here. We're going to proceed on to public comment. I believe, sir, you, who asked the question, you're actually first for public comment. So you're welcome to stand up. It says professional engineer regarding wanting to adhere to current zoning.
Okay, it's Tom Coke that I have in practice. He has a state licensed professional engineer who worked on mechanical and civil engineering projects. I have reviewed, as part of my work aside, that's not as, in any capacity for the city, but I worked for attorneys, I worked for insurance companies regarding some developments in Old City Township. I recall one that was done by NEF Engineering where I reviewed the plans. I didn't have a problem with the engineering, but I did have a problem with the fact that things were being built on top of all seats and ponds. And we had some people who had water in their basements and they were going... And as part of what I was doing for the insurance company, you know, they were seeking remedies. Well, it's pretty hard when you've got water up wellings, so that would be a concern. As far as my background, we bought land in Parma Heights back in the 1980s, which was all zoned an acre and quarter per house. The properties behind us were minimum of three and a half acres coming off a parkway. That was developed, developed by NEF Engineering. Now, I had all the council meetings, all the... All the conferences for 20, 25 years. There was a development that went in, Woodgate Development, NEF engineered it. There was a homeowners association. He had a road coming out to the Huffman Main Street with no storm sewers. It was wetland property. We took it to court to enforce that wetlands be evaluated. It was engineered without that information being taken into account. We had intermittent springs that were blocked by NEF Engineering. And because they raised the whole property five feet in order to divert water. Well, we had people on the parkway with water flowing into their basements. We, this is the Woodgate Development. We had homes that were built on top of ponds and they had water in their basement. We had an undersized retention basin that overflowed, flooded everybody out. NEF Engineering put in a failsafe. And this is only because I know people on homeowners association. I was intimately involved with the city. And later on, the planning commission to prevent some of these things from occurring. Yet, NEF put a very short piece of undersized pipe, which met the engineering code requirements. And I remember my friend, Bill Kleinhams, who was very active in the homeowners association, told me, Tom, we solved all those flooding problems. There was a restrictor in there. We removed it. Now the pipe's two sizes larger and it just gushes out to Big Creek. Subsequent to that... At that time, the mayor was Marty Zanotti. He was the first house in the development. And then he went up to my neighbors along with his developer and they put in the Rumus Development, which is immediately adjacent to my property. And... And basically, NEF engineered it. And there was a deed restriction of one and a quarter acres. That was completely ignored by NEF Engineering. The homeowners association agreement where the land adjacent to this long access road was supposed to be turned over to the residents was instead developed with the mayor's friend. And this has been going on now, a 20-year battle that I have had because NEF Engineering didn't follow the laws, put in failsafes. I have been charged by Parma Heights for having a woods in my property. Everybody else can have a woods, but I can't because they put in houses with properties three and a half foot deep behind the house against trees that are five foot in diameter. It's an old growth wetland course that's never been tempered. And I'm in court for my job. I know how to fight people. They have taken me to court twice without, and I get pulled instead of going.
Thank you. The comments are noted, sir. We're going to have three minutes for each comment. I'm sorry, I came in a little bit too quickly after the questions and answers here. If you go over your three minutes and you'd like to continue at the end, we will get to you after everybody else said an opportunity to speak. Does that make sense? And in order to speak, come up here, stand up here like this gentleman just did. We want to make sure anybody watching or listening on Zoom can actually hear what you have to say. And we certainly don't want to get into a situation where folks who are sitting down were not recognized or in any sort of back and forth with the board or with the developers. So if, yeah. Our next public comment here is Ms. Donnie Danko. Donnie, you have three minutes. Although we'll be a little bit flexible with that. If you could come up front, please. Thanks. Sorry.
Okay, my name is Donnie Danko. I live at the property that's directly next door to Hollow's. I'm the one that they like to pretend does not exist. We have a horse farm there. And I had submitted a letter last time to you all and a whole bunch of pictures, which I'm going to share real quick before I go over my thoughts because I don't have a lot of confidence in anything they say or anything they're doing. I don't know if you can see this picture, but this, several years ago, they cleared Hollow's land. That land is completely ignored, it's overgrown, it's a disaster. They cleared it to, I believe, for survey or something, I'm not sure. But when they did it, this was the result. That's my husband standing in our yard. That is water. This is... So this is my yard right next to my barn. I had to evacuate all of our horses. Thank God for my neighbor across the street at the time, he took them all in. Can you see that? We lost so much. It was, it was bad. So anyways, that is why I'm not super confident in anything they're saying. But I tried to not go on to my letter. So I just wanted to say a couple of things. You know, I'm sick and tired of the lack of respect for our neighborhood, our lives and our investments and our futures. I'm not sure when it becomes right for the pure greed of the individuals to negatively impact all of our lives. The idea of mass home construction right on top of my farm will literally destroy my business, cripple us financially and everything we've invested to bring this farm back to life. I have distributed the letter with a lot of detail on how having all of these homes forty feet from our horses is going to be a big problem. My interactions, and I just, I want to say this because my interactions have been nothing but disrespectful and rude and complete disregard for us as individuals, business owners and families. Mr. NEF directly stated to me that it was no surprise. I'm okay with septic systems because you're horse people. Yes. I'll leave that for your own interpretations. The statement was also made by members of that group to me that they could not believe that I was even still there. Well, I can tell you, we're not going anywhere anytime soon. We've invested our lives here to bring this farm back to life. It's our business, our passion, most importantly, it's our home. We're building our memories here with our grandchildren and our children. It's a very special piece of our lives. We love this community. It's very unique. It's unlike anything else out there that I've seen. We loved our homes for a long time and we just kept starting back to this dump on Lewis Road. And I literally wasn't sure we could make it work, but so far we're there. Let's see.
You have three minutes, Donnie. Thank you. You can come back at the end if you want. What's that? Oh, yeah, can we get those for the record? Just the physical written, the photos that you have.
Oh, from the last meeting? I think Janice is back.
Do you want them in the record for this meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next up, we have Paul Popovich Jr., 183 Stone Ridge Way, Berea. It's right here.
Yeah. Looks like an owl.
All right, you have three minutes, folks. If we could be quiet so that folks can hear, thank you.
Hi, so I've been intending to meet now for a couple of years. I can see some of the same faces. It is not often the irony of living in a 500, actually I think it's like 650-door development now, biting at 160 some. I get it, it's not really cool of me to do that. But most of my concerns stem around traffic, sewers, roads, schools and like the same things you folks are wondering about. I don't have a problem with 40 acre lots. In fact, I'd actually probably want them in the one family enough to get out of my H.A., which is a different story until then, but I don't. It's, we've been down this road a couple of times now and I, without material change and we folks are offering, I'm just really trying, I'm really confused as to where the benefit and like the cost analysis comes out on all of this stuff. It's, I just don't get it. I haven't seen more photos, developmental changes, you know, like anything, right? So like, I'm happy to show up and keep having these discussions. I just, I'm looking for change and so I'm give and take here. And I get that 160 is less than 290, which is nice, but show me the 40 acre or the 40 costs with two acre lots, like, cool. Like, there will be some challenges around traffic, schools and stuff, and we'll work through that because that's what we're supposed to do, but that's really all I got. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Next up, we have Mary Vetta, 24526, no bottom road.
Hello, everybody. I'm sure you probably know me because I have tons of title involvements and I will continue to be highly involved in this. I can't understand how they can ask for a rezon, ask for approval with no answers. Oh, just approve it and then we'll figure out the traffic study later. Just approve it and we'll figure out the sewers later. No, it needs to be all at one time, the whole picture. They did have a traffic study done for Berea. They're glossing over it. The traffic going to Barrett would need to have property purchased from the metro parks and the trail had to leverage out underneath the bridge in order to alleviate that traffic. They would also have to have turning lanes on Lewis right on top of that hill so people could turn in that development. And I can see people going off down the hill. So I cannot see how you can recommend or prove anything without all the answers, all the answers. Sewers, if you get sewers from Bagley, I do believe you'll have to have a pumping station to get up there. Who maintains that pumping station? Who pays for it? I know at Wattsworth, there was a development that did a pumping station. Now they're trying to get Wattsworth to take it over because they don't want to pay for it anymore. So all, everything, everything needs to be ducks in a row before anything is approved. And that, we have a comprehensive plan for a reason. Because this is the way we want to live in our township. I don't care about the... We want to live this way in our township. We have rural residential and that is going to change that definitely. We have horses going down the street. We love our thing. So we have a comprehensive plan. And again, I said this before, we give you the right to take away our comprehensive plan and the way our citizens want to live in that area. So do not recommend any zoning thing until all of the answers. And we want to hear all the answers.
Next, we have, I believe it's Jim Latham, 7094 Lewis Road. Four is yours, Jimmy. You have three minutes.
Three minutes. Right, so a lot of people have already said, a lot of things that I want to say, but I'll say them again. You know, the community has done some planning, right? They've said what do we want our community to be? And there's a plan, right? We put some thought into how we want this part of the township to look and how we want it to look for years to come. And we've said it needs to be two acre lots. This is what the community has said. And I think we can do a buyback. You know, I... I love living, sort of. And every day, you know, I pinch myself that I'm so lucky to live there. I just hate to see this. I hate to see this happen. And there's all the reasons of littering and the roads. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't follow the will of the people. I don't think there's one person there that says, oh, this is the correct idea.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Next, we have Ms. Donna Kelly, 7280 Lewis Road.
Hello, everybody. I live at 7280 Lewis. I'm going to turn 68 years old in July. And I saved a lot of money to make Lewis Road my retirement home. I've lived on Lewis Road now for four years, almost five years. The reason I bought this property was because of the zoning, because I wanted to have this atmosphere, because I wanted to live on Lewis Road like this. I need to say, even though I spoke before about benefit versus risk, this right here, all of these houses, this is greed. This is the benefit. This is greed. But what I'm hearing people here talk about is that this is their lives. I also want to share with the rest of the room here that as I'm watching, and I understand your wonderful attorneys, both of you, you know, supporting your client. However, I'm watching you smirk at some of our responses. I'm watching you, sir, shake your head like this when we're speaking. But we are people that have worked very hard to live where we do. Not so somebody can come in and want to make a lot of money on us and change the whole environment that we are trying to live. I don't understand how Lewis Road at all can sustain that extra traffic, especially if we're talking about there being drainage onto Lewis Road. You can't live in that road. It's also very dangerous in the winter. I don't know how these roads are going to be, you know, how people are going to travel them. But the issue is, is that I've worked really hard in my life to... I look like I'm boring. I'm boring, you know? I've worked really hard in my life to get to where I am, to live at Lewis Road as a single woman at age 68. And I want to stay there. I don't want to have to move because it's become, you know, full of housing developments, traffic coming through. There's still so much traffic right now. You have no idea. Like this woman said, please sit in my parking, sit in my driveway and watch when people are coming, trying to come through, to use it as a cut through. It will be terrible. And I just want you to consider us. I understand you've got a rich client here, but this is greed, sheer greed. That's all this is. It's greed.
All right, the last public comment I have here...
I need to go on the record. I am not a attorney. So I think I would be wrong if I did say that.
The last public comment I have here is Nancy Boronich, Borne. Sorry, 7590 Lewis Road. If you, if you plan to make a comment and you haven't brought a comment form up yet, please do so now.
Okay, I'll try not to be a young one here, but a couple of things. I think that this is a huge risk for the township. Our roads are tarred. Lewis Road is partially funded by the county, partially funded by the county, correct? It's a county road.
It's a county road.
But when people were having to go through our drainage issues, we dealt with the township, do you remember the guy's name? And we were told that some of the drainage issues were actually shared with the counties. That's what we were told. So regardless, do we always want to have to go back to a county? You know, we're right on the edge of Cuyahoga County. I don't know how many people have much faith in Cuyahoga County and the funding that we can guarantee that every seven years we're getting that new road. The road was paved two years ago. The drainage issues still are not fixed. I would love to get the answer to the question, was NEF responsible for the undersizing of the retention part of Sandstone Ridge? Because that destroyed a whole ravine. There are lands that are north or south of us and east of Lewis, or west of Lewis, rather, that could also be designated. That goes down to the Rocky River. We're told that we can't cut grass next to the river because we have to worry about erosion. And we do that. We don't cut the grass and leave it in a natural state. So here we are trying to protect the land along there to stop erosion, yet that's the very thing that's going to happen when all that water goes gushing through. I don't care what you guys say, there's absolutely no faith, I think by nearly anybody in this room, that NEF or anybody is going to do what they're supposed to do. And do we have the money, go over and have lawsuit after lawsuit to blame this? Because we are going to be the ones, your insurance is not going to pay for a water outage. You know, sewer and water backup isn't going to happen because it wasn't a sewer and it wasn't water backing up. So why do we all have to be at risk to make it for Hollow Ridge?
All right, next we have Carol Miller off Barrett Road.
I'm Carol Miller. I've lived in the corner of Barrett Fair and Spence for nearly 50 years. And I love it here. And as the gentleman has said, why are we here again dealing with the same project that has been sent, we've said no to you folks multiple times. Berea has said no to you folks and the county has said no to you folks. So you've come back again to ask again, just hoping that nobody will show up. This is a wildly unpopular project. It will be paid for by taxpayers in communities that don't want it. So why are we here again for the same thing? These roads were not built for the traffic that would be generated by a construction project of this size. In addition, we have the county detouring traffic through our neighborhood. And it's best been gone on for three years now. I don't personally think I'm going to live to see the end of that project. But I, I'm not kidding. But in any case, sometimes I'll have 10 cars backed up at the stop sign by my house in the morning. This is insane. And I have horses. I try to drive my horses in the park and I have to go down the road, short trip down the road, which is not a big deal because my horse is dead broke. But there's so much traffic that it's been putting us at risk for a long time. So add in the traffic from all these construction trucks and putting us at risk. The county has put us at risk for three years now. But in any case, by the time it's done, the county will have to come back and repay Barrett and Lewis again.
Right.
What, why are we here again? Uh, this is an unending burden that will be placed on the taxpayers and we don't want it. This project, you can see, nobody wants this project except these gentlemen who are working hard for it. Um, this area is don't real residential for a reason. Uh, Mr. Hollow is more than welcome to develop his property in accordance with the current zoning, but he doesn't have a right to change all of our lives to put money in his time. Looking for grants and just buying this thing of property from Hollow and making it that Hollow Memorial Park.
All right, um, next we have Debbie and I believe it's Niedsger?
Niedsger.
Niedsger, sorry, thought there was an N or N.
Hi, I'm Debbie Niedsger, I live off of Lain, I've been there for twenty five years. Uh, I'm a parent, I bought this property, I got the boards, it's a lot to take care of, but as my neighbors down off of Lain, I stayed there because I absolutely am in love with the area. I worry about the precedent this is going to set. You start changing zoning and somebody else is going to come in and say you did it for them, we want it. I don't know if anybody else has noticed, but the Falls Development irks me to no end, it's a tax abatement site for development in Olmsted Falls. I see the traffic from those developments already in the Falls impacting everything. Has anybody thought about climate change? I see climate change on our street with the water coming down. I didn't think about water for the first ten years I lived there, the last fifteen have been a nightmare with the water. Climate change is a real thing and this water is going to get worse and worse and you want to build all these homes. I don't care what plan you have, there's no plan you can come up with that we're going to approve. None, there's no way you can put that amount of homes and have a plan we're going to approve because it's impossible. And I am vehemently against this. This is where I live, I have horses up and down the street because we have a beautiful stable on the end. I see the traffic going across that hill with these horses and this is just absolutely ridiculous. It's all about money and I will fight this till I live my death.
I just want to note for the record by a show of hands here, if this property were to be developed with, let's say, fifty homes spread across the entirety of it, how many of you here would oppose that?
One of them.
Under, under, under the rural residential zoning code, sorry, under the rural residential zoning code.
Two layers.
Just, just want to be clear, how many of you would oppose developing this land within the rural residential zoning code? Raise your hand. Just one.
There's too many.
No, that's fine, that's totally fine, it's, you're allowed to say that, I just want it noted for the record.
Right, but I don't think that's a legal office, that's, I think that's what we're at.
So can we make sure the record reflects that two individuals would oppose developing this within the rural residential zoning code? Next up is Eric, uh, Shatrik, I'm sorry, Shatrik, bad with names as you can tell.
I just want to give some hard data on the water and the drainage. I'm right in between Barrett, No Bottom. Uh, I worked with Eric Williams in the township when they did the road, they got those drains put in. I spent eight grand of my own money and dug drainage in my yard. It goes into, there's a storm sewer in the street this time. Um, I have a pump and I have a sensor on it. The last two rain events we had, and this is a low estimate, it was seventy thousand gallons of water. My pump ran for five days. Um, and now obviously I'm taking all my neighbors' water and I'm helping all my neighbors with this, but it helps, but it helps. I like to close high the yard now, I can use my yard a month after the rain instead of the rain etc. An eight year old neighbor next door was fixing her water mower yesterday and she mentioned to me that she's making baths out of her sink. Her basement flooded, her son pump died, I gotta yell at him and tell him the story. So while I was fixing her son pump, fixing her hot water tank yesterday, they were one of the first twenty houses on the road, she's old. She said until twelve years ago, water was not, you know, gradually got over worse. I walked my house eleven years ago and it's gotten worse and worse and worse. Things are going to happen, um, obviously water is always going to be an issue. But whatever is in the road as a sewer is not, um, going to withstand the purposes that they have to be definitely approved. I walked down Lewis Road for four hours with, uh, the regional sewer district, township. You know, we kind of pushed, pushed, put it in, and I saw it with my two eyes. Um, as a, developing the property based on our current plan, I think it'd be fine, I mean, I'm also against like the government getting involved in my property. So as long as it matches the, um, what our township has planned for our area, that would be fine as long as there's mitigation for the water. So just want to use some data, what I see with the water, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up we have Becky Tauter.
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 I know there's people here that have lived here longer than me, I've been here almost twenty five years, okay? Now, originally, the original Mr. Hollow was offered to sell that property when Maria annexed. The property is behind us with the development. Why didn't he do it then? Because he wanted to keep his property. Why is that our problem now? That's the main thing I want to know, I want you people to help. Twenty years ago when they built that development behind us in the Strawberry Gatch, he had an opportunity to sell that land, but he didn't sell. Yeah, Bree doesn't want it now.
J D Ordner.
How's everybody doing? Uh, so I just moved here, I used to work for Mary when I was eleven years old. Uh, it's clean as salt and I've loved this area ever since. Um, moved into the house right next to Lewis Road Riding Route. So I get to see all of you, I think it's not becoming a graduate area. This is, this place is sanctuary for us to live on Lewis Road, right? It's the pride of the town. That's why I said we're going to over the river and everything just stops for a day, right? You know, you get to do your own little thing. Uh, I'm just, I I've heard it before, I'm curious as to how many times do you got to be told no? Before you stop asking, right? Bring us a plan that might follow what we have established, we worked really hard on it and we might be a little more lenient right now, right? I got two kids, there's eleven kids across the street from me, people already use sixty miles an hour Lewis Road. Add more traffic, let one of my kids get hurt, right? We need to not have that happen, right? And I know you probably don't care because you're going to get a check stroke to your lawsuit, it'll be all right. But I think it's a bad idea, I think if we follow the rules and regulations that the Mary and so many others have contributed to, I think, I think we could, we could do that. But a hundred and so much houses, come on.
Come on, come on, man.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next up. Next up, we have Ashley Sanchez on Lewis Road. And this is the last one I have, uh, up here.
I promised myself I wouldn't talk because I've talked at probably four of these meetings already and you guys are probably going to be hearing me. Um, but I just wanted to stand up and say that we have lived on Lewis Road for six years. The first time I actually ever came to Olmstead Township was seven years ago and my GPS randomly provided me through Lewis Road, I was one of those annoying people driving down the street all the time. Um, but I remember looking at the houses, looking at the landscape and thinking, this is one of the most beautiful places in the world and I would love to live here. And then just by chance, that house ended up and we ended up buying it. Um, and I echo whoever it was earlier that said how lucky we are to live on Lewis Road. And I think you could just look at this audience and it's really reflective of that, how important Lewis Road is and the and the horse culture is to our community and we're really lucky, there's nowhere else in Cuyahoga County where this exists. And so I know they want us to stick to talking about, um, the the changing to the rural residential zoning plan, they say just stick to that. So if we do stick to that, I would say, let's not rezone. If they want to build houses, they can do it on two acre lots, hell, maybe I'll buy one of them. But let's stick to the plan because otherwise we're going to lose what we've got and obviously it's really special to all of us.
All right, uh, that concludes our public comment. Uh, for the record, in addition to the information received as part of this public hearing, the board has the application documents and the re- recommendations from the Olmstead Township zoning permission. Uh, that concludes this public meeting. The matter will be taken under advisement by the board and a determination will be rendered pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, uh, section five one nine point one two H. Um, with that, I will move to adjourn.
Are we being allowed to make free discussion comments?
Yeah, sir, we're we're moving to adjourn the meeting, I'm sorry. Oh, uh, do we have the ones that, there was one that asked, correct? Do you want to read that one, Gary? Um, sorry.
I don't know if I have, you might have any feedback there.
Yeah. Sorry, there was, I think, one individual who sent us a letter and asked for it to be read. So Gary, do you want to add the others?
Here are the letters dated April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four. Uh, here, Homestead Township Board of Zoning Commission members. Brea Sandstone Ridge and Homestead Township residents, Brea's council members and Homestead Township trustees have been fighting against annexation and or development of the proposed one hundred sixty two single family residence of the Hollow property on an annual basis since two thousand nineteen. Sandstone, as well as, as well as affected Homestead Township residents have come out yearly, nearly a hundred percent against the currently proposed development of the property as it wants to preserve, as it wants to preserve it as a wildlife preserve. The seller could work with the Western Reserve, legal metro parks and or surrounding communities to accomplish this. One thousand five hundred people have signed the online petition against annexation and or development and yet the developers still want to move slash push forward with annexation and or development year after year with no apparent end in sight. These same developers from the past five years have scheduled yet another public hearing for Saturday, April twenty seventh at ten AM at Homestead Township Town Hall located two six nine hundred Cook Road. Homestead Township to try and convince the community, Homestead Township Board of Zoning Commission members, that the Hollow property be rezoned from rural residential into planned residential development for single family detached residences. On top of the real concerns of flooding issues, uh, please refer to past sewer studies and meetings. The Sandstone, Brea and Township residents are worried about higher traffic that developers have tried to overcome with flawed traffic studies that don't accurately take into account the number of extra cars represented by one hundred sixty two new homes, among many other negative issues associated with the proposed development. Brea and Homestead Township residents strongly urge the Township Board of Zoning Commission to keep the Hollow property zoned as rural residential, no matter how many hearings into the future the sellers slash developers request. As it clearly appears that the sellers slash developers will continue to relentlessly pers- persist in developing the land, another possible, possible solution might be to build significantly fewer, yet higher priced houses on the property, but within the Homestead Township rural residential guidelines. Again, no one is trying to stop the seller from selling the land. Uh, at that, at the same time, the seller slash developer cannot force the land to be annexed to Brea and or force slash convince Homestead Township to change the zoning from RR to PRD. Thank you for taking the time to read this letter into the record. Signed, John Bianca, uh, Brea Sandstone Ridge resident, born in Brea.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to move to adjourn this public hearing at eleven PM.
Second.
Yes.
Trustee Paul, yes, and trustee's there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, feels like eleven PM, meeting adjourned.
Guys, just so you know, the last thing I wanted to say.
I'm sorry to be.